Call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, June 7th, 2021 to order roll call, please.
Mayor Gafino.
Here.
Trustee Curtis. Trustee Carol.
Here.
Trustee Gailey.
Here.
Trustee Lowery.
Here.
Trustee Nedvedge.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
Okay, any audience comments? Trustee comments?
Item one, discussion is 232 Misswood Lane, the variance, Steve. Thank you, Mayor. Item number one, Mike has made me aware that I sometimes steal his thunder, so I'll make it quick. It's a variance because someone would like to have a three season room built in their backyard and it encroaches on their rear yard setback. Yeah, the property is at 232 Misswood Lane, which is the northeast corner of Misswood and Hilltop. They want to construct a sunroom in the back of the house. I think it's about 204 square feet. Sunrooms are enclosed porches. They're treated as building additions. The property being in the R1 has a 40-foot rear yard setback, which in this case will be the north property line. And they're looking to place the structure 37 feet from the north property line. So it would be a variance allowing three feet to encroach into the 40-foot setback. The mono-square footage that would be involved, I think I calculated about 51 square feet if you take the actual width of the structure, proposed structure and the three feet into the yard. The plant commission held a public hearing on June 1st. There was a positive recommendation for the variance that came out of that unanimously from the plant commission. They had cited that the lot being on a corner lot has two front yard setbacks, which you can see on the plat here, which reduces the usable area of the yard. Also too, there is a property, the property of the north is unincorporated. And we had estimated that the distance between the structures right now exceeds about 85 feet. So the plant commission had also made a statement that the property to the north is actually further away from the southern, its southern property line than normal because there is a driveway on that property that enters a side loaded garage. So that, that home to the north, which would be closest to the proposed sunroom, is actually moved a little bit north within its own property line, given that configuration layout with a side loaded garage. I've pretty much have gone through everything. I, I'm assuming the petitioners on tonight if they want to go ahead and add anything to the conversation. It's David Lewis, I believe.
Sorry, can you hear us?
Yes.
I apologize for the delay. Yeah, technical difficulties. We're trying to figure out which button to push. I apologize. Yeah, I don't, I think you explained it really well. When we first started this, and we had told this to the, to the committee on the first, is that, and on that plat survey that he showed, there's a little box from the original, when we first bought the property, you'll see on the plat survey, it says 30-foot setback in the back. If you go down to the zoning requirements that are slightly below that, it says the rear yard is 30 foot. So when we started doing this research, like two and a half, three years ago, we were under the misunderstanding, we didn't realize that the zoning had changed to 40 feet. So when we did this, we thought we were well within, you know, the property lines. So Mike Toth, I believe it was, corrected us on that once we, you know, worked it out and got like the formal paperwork in. So yeah, we're basically, without this variance, the room will be nine feet wide, which is a hallway, a large hallway. We're asking for consideration on this to have that three feet so that we could have a 12-foot size room, just to make it worth the effort. We'd like to improve the house. It's, right now we have a small deck back there that is aged with the house. It's been here for 30 years. So it definitely needs to be replaced and we prefer to upgrade the property, not just repair it. So that was the reason for the request.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it, yeah.
I mean, it's not three feet. It's not like 30 feet. It's just a small amount, so.
Yeah, Mike, did, did any of the neighbors show up to the public hearing?
Uh, no.
Any concerns? No? Okay.
No.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Mark?
I'm good.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, part district land cash resolution, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two is in regards to how we distribute land cash to the Fox Valley Park District. Bill's going to walk us through basically how we do the Fox Valley Park District as opposed to our other taxing districts.
Thank you, Steve. As the board is aware, the village imposes via ordinance requirement for residential developers to donate land or pay cash when land isn't practical for the purposes of development or improvement of parks or other recreational purposes. Historically, the village has held on to these funds and once the Fox Valley Park District has completed a project, then the village would reimburse the park district for the cost of that project, once it was complete. The village currently also collects, as the board is aware, land cash fees for the library, the fire district and the various school districts. And we remit those funds on typically an annual basis, sometimes more frequently depending on timing and our ability to reconcile the accounts and make sure the amounts are correct. So there's been some discussions between the village and the Fox Valley Park District about the village remitting those funds on a more frequent basis to the Fox Valley Park District. So they can have the opportunity to use those funds for planning purposes, for future improvements within the village and leverage those funds with other funds they may have to, you know, begin their process to look into other improvements within the village for various park improvements. So the park district is here as well. If there's any questions, I think they've had several discussions between, I mean, Steve and the park district regarding this. And based on some of those discussions, we drafted the attached resolution, which would essentially authorize finance to go through the process of reviewing those funds that we've received from developers, reconciling them and having them on the regular bill listing at least once a year for remittance to the Fox Valley Park District. I think with that, I'm gonna see if there's any questions or maybe let Steve chime in or, I know Jeff is here, Palmquist as well from the park district.
We've always had a great relationship with the park district. So I, I think it's just only fair for us to give them the money that's owed to them. So yes.
Todd?
Yep, no, sounds, sounds like it makes sense.
Mark?
And these are all restricted funds for the park district anyway. It's not, they're not our funds, right?
They, unlike the other districts, we don't offer fire protection services. We don't offer library services. But we do have statutory authority to provide for parks. So we actually have the authority to hang on to those funds. But of course, you know, that isn't really what we do. Theoretically, we could, but we've always, you know, turned them over to the park district because they do that and they're more efficient with it, obviously, and can combine it with their own resources to provide more robust parks.
So is part, is part of this proposal to turn over the 780,000?
That's correct. So to go back historically, going back 30 years of research that we tried to do before this, I couldn't put a finger on it 100% of why the relationship, why we hold the money the way we do for the park district, because we historically have given all the park district funds we've collected or all the park land cash fees to the park district. The caveat has always been, unlike other districts, that they have to do the work in North Aurora. And then when they are done with that work, they basically show us the receipts and we pay them to the penny what they did. And in Bill's memo, it actually shows that the last two times that they've requested funding and what was paid out. In this case, they're looking to potentially, the way it was explained to me is that they're looking to use these funds in a way to, let's just say you wanted to do a park or you wanted to apply for a grant. And you wanted to leverage funds or use them quickly. There's no guarantee if they do it ahead of time and then have to go back for the village to then approve something they've already done in case for some, whatever reason, the village doesn't want to disperse the funds at that point and then they've outed themselves that money. So what this does is this resolution takes the exact practice that we have now with the caveat that they have to use all the funding in North Aurora. And they can only be used for the statutory limitations of what the state allows, which is to purchase land or use on existing parks for the purpose of parkland, once again, in North Aurora. It's just doing it by resolution because 30 years of past practice and the statutory issue, I didn't feel it was comfortable to make that internal change without talking to the board first.
Do we reserve any funds for, because the village has its own park property right here? And is there any other park property in the village that is not maintained by the park district?
Other than this park, we maintain the Berman Tower area. Sorry.
Oh, I see. The Veterans Park on Willow Way.
Memorial.
So do we reserve any funds out of those park fees for those?
We have not.
Any maintenance items or issues that have risen with Veterans Park or Riverfront Park have just come out of the general fund if, if something does occur.
I'm okay with it.
Or? I mean, it's money that we gotta give.
Well, I mean, I, I agree with what Mark's saying. I mean, maybe we should take a look and see if we should be holding some back just because we do have expenses. And we're going to be hosting things like movies in the park and things like that. So.
But you can't use the money for things like movies in the park. It has to be a park improvement or it has to be the purchase of land for a park or some kind of recreational area.
Yeah, the land cash fees that we collect are limited to acquisition of property or capital expenditures on existing parks. So it's not, we couldn't really use them for operations, but we could use them theoretically for any land acquisitions or improvements to the land that we own if we kept them.
It just, it seems to me like the park district does such a great job and it's a, it's a burden off the village staff. They don't have to go clean up or, you know, work in the parks. Like I said, I always felt that we had a great relationship with the park district. We're just giving them money to make our neighborhood nicer. So I, I think it's, resolution's just fine.
Mr. Larry?
I don't have any problem with it. I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it. I just wanted to clarify. So when there's a new development in the village, there are land cash fees collected if they're not going to provide a park.
That's correct.
And so for each development that comes into the village, more money would be flowing into that fund as new developments come into the village, correct?
Correct. Historically, we only have, and Bill corrected from, but usually about a couple hundred thousand dollars or so that stays in that fund. The reason there's a large amount right now is because of Lincoln Valley. Because we have a 374 unit subdivision that's building, that is paying those land cash fees upon permit as opposed to building a park.
And so the, the fees would be transferred to the, to the park district in a lump sum one time per year?
This would be a lump sum, but in general, what Bill was saying, and yeah, I guess in theory, it could be every year, it could be every quarter. We're saying no less than one year, which is what we do with the other taxing bodies. We distribute it anywhere from quarterly to annually.
I don't have any problem with it. I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I just want to add that, I think really we just wanted to get this in writing, so 30 years from now, it still continues. And we've enjoyed a great relationship with the park district. You know, they've always treated North Aurora real well. And I know with Jim Pilmer, the executive director, when he came on, that was one of his emphasis was the tie-in Montgomery and North Aurora. And, you know, he's done that and he's committed to that. So I mean, I, yeah, I don't have any problem with that. Just, just want to get it kind of in writing. And like Mark Gailey said, you know, it's a burden off us, you know, we don't want to deal with parks and they know how to do it. So, and so we're, we're thankful for that. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I would, I would note that, you know, we're doing this by resolution, you know, obviously that's unilateral action. We have included those conditions within it. One of the conditions is that they use the money basically within the restrictions that are required by law as well as use the money specifically in North Aurora, which has traditionally been what has been requested. And the other condition is, well, no, those are, those are the conditions. You know, we're doing it by resolution. We can always change it. The alternative to this would be an intergovernmental agreement, which would lock us in, you know, to whatever terms get negotiated. So, you know, there is, you know, if, if we wanted to revisit, visit this next year, we could, or five years from now, or whatever, you know, we're taking unilateral option, actions. So we're not really locking ourselves into anything, but we're giving direction to staff so that they have direction on how to go forward in the future. And obviously, if we want to change that in the future, we can.
Okay, my thanks. And I appreciate that clarification because that is the, the reason why it is a resolution. And as Kevin pointed out, the park district is not being a party to this resolution. It's unilateral action on the village board that we can amend if we ever believe we need to. There's also one other provision that we added in here. And, and this is not an indication of any, you know, communication issues. We do talk, I mean, Jeff Palmquist in the crowd, he and I talk a lot about projects that the park district are working on year round for the Fox Valley Park District and Jim Pilmer as well. And in this regards, what we're looking to do is have a more formal process where at least annually, we meet with the park district and sit down and actually have kind of a scoping session on what types of projects are looking to use those funds and as well as an update on how they're using them. Very similar to how we do a TIP district. We meet with the joint review board once a year and we explain to the taxing districts how the funds were expended and talk about future projects within the TIP district.
Okay, thanks. Jeff Palmquist, you have anything that you would like to add or? All right, thank you. So we're good, Steve, on that one?
Unless the board has more questions, that's all we had.
All right. Again, item three, liquor code changes, Steve.
Okay, item number three is there's multiple items under item number three, so we're gonna take them one part at a time. Basically, this all started when Mayor Gafino came on board as liquor commissioner. We started looking at the liquor code and looking for anything that may need to be updated or any thoughts he had on and making us competitive or same as other towns around us in case there were any, you know, lapses in our code. And what we found was there's a couple of sections that we've, some of them we've talked internally and the mayor brought a few to our attention. The first one, he's looking for feedback basically from the board because it requires a village code change of the liquor code. The first one is the hours that we allow packaged liquor sales right now. And as you see, we kind of looked at the towns reasonably that I think somebody from North Aurora would drive to if they were looking to purchase liquor. So we used Aurora, Batavia, Montgomery, and I believe Geneva and Sugar Grove are even added in here at times. And right now, we have packaged liquor that on Sundays that it can only be sold at 10:00 AM and then all the way through 11:00 PM on Sundays. Some of our neighboring towns start at nine. And so the question, the first one brought to the board, Sugar Grove actually starts at six, Geneva's at 10:00 and the others, I believe, are at nine.
6:00 AM, huh?
Yeah, 6:00 AM in the morning. And so one of the thoughts was, would the board be interested in it? Or he'd like some feedback on the six, or excuse me, now I'm saying 6:00 AM, the 9:00 AM start time instead of 10:00 to sell packaged liquor on a Sunday?
9:00 AMs.
I don't think it makes any difference. What, what if it's an hour?
Most people stop after church, right? Or?
Absolutely, right on their way home.
Well, we've got like five liquor stores in town, so I think it'll be good for sales. It benefits the village, that extra hour.
One of the places brought it up to me. That's kind of how I, so.
I mean, I would think Woodman's and Aldi's was probably since, well, Woodman's is obviously kind of a regional job, but there's an Aldi in almost every town around here, so it would benefit them for sure.
Is there a reason Sunday's different running, in general?
You know, I'm gonna punt that one to Kevin because the mayor and I talked about it and I hit, my only theory is that Sundays were always treated differently because they were always treated differently, like in car sales and, you know. And yeah, there was a time in the past where there were no liquor sales on Sunday. And so this is kind of a leftover, you know.
Yeah.
Piece that goes into that.
It used to be noon, noon on Sunday, then it could sell, but then it kind of wasn't.
Yeah, there was a time.
Was interfering with the Bears game.
Yeah, yeah. Why not, why not make it seven o'clock like every other day? Just make it easy. You know?
7:00 AM?
Oh, I just thought nine was because of Aurora, Batavia, Jason Towns are all nine, so. They might get too crazy in 4:00 AM or 24 hours a day, but I thought it was an easy one to push back one hour.
Yeah, it's, yeah. So it sounds like 9:00 AM seems okay to put, this would all go to the village board in a final ordinance.
Yes.
All right, item number two, this is a longstanding staff issue. So in our code, Natalie put it in the memo, so I want to read it to you. Our code says, notwithstanding the foregoing to the contrary, which already just throws everybody off, alcoholic liquors may be sold, offered for sale and/or consumed until 2:00 AM immediately following the day that is a legal holiday. Reason that code is in there is we, we shut off liquor sales five days a week at 1:00 AM. And sometimes it's two, if it's Friday and Saturday nights, technically Saturday and Sunday mornings. What, if you read that closely, it says 2:00 AM immediately following the day that is a legal holiday. Well, we get calls every year from at least one or two restaurants that on New Year's Eve want to stay open till 2:00 AM. And we tell them, sorry, the way the code is written, you can open on New Year's Day and serve till the day after New Year's.
Yeah.
Till 2:00 AM.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But you can't actually stay open till 2:00 AM on New Year's Eve going into New Year's Day, which makes no sense to at least.
Yeah.
At the staff level, it's always really, we have to, one year it fell on a Saturday, so it didn't matter. But nevertheless, we would like to add that, if the board is comfortable, an exception would be on New Year's Eve, you could also drink till two the following day. Yeah, because New Year's Eve is not a legal holiday.
That seems reasonable.
Okay, item number three.
About Black Wednesday.
Believe it or not, that actually did come up and I didn't want to start randomly picking days. I know New Year's is the only one we actually get calls on.
Well, Black Wednesday is the biggest drinking day of the year.
It is?
Other than Super Bowl Sunday. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving. It's when all the college kids come home and go out drinking. I'd be up for, why not?
I'm sorry, trustee Carol, I know nothing of the day before Thanksgiving. We call it Black Wednesday?
It's all rumor and your speculations and stuff. Anyway, you probably don't.
It's called Black Wednesday?
It's called Black Wednesday.
I think the correct term is blackout Wednesday.
Well, whatever, but.
I didn't know about that one.
Which is what we used to call it back in college, not that I.
I mean, I don't want to start a big thing, but I, I mean, if we're gonna say New Year's Eve, let's pick the drinking days and let the bars stay open.
I definitely got New Year's Eve down. If anyone wants to throw out any other dates, I mean, we, and, and I would just say this, I mean, we don't do this for.
Why, why do we even have to have a cutoff time, Monday through Friday?
Right, that's what I'm, I don't.
Why not just make it any day you want?
You know, trustee Curtis, that's an interesting question because some towns, the liquor licenses just are 2:00 AM regardless of the day. And our code has always been 1:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, and then two on Friday, Saturday. I, I can't tell you why it was ever established that way. That's just what the code has been.
I think it would end a lot of confusion if we just opened it up.
Well, it would clear up the New Year's Eve issue.
Hazard to have people drinking 2:00 AM, seven days a week.
Does that extra hour affect drivers and?
Personally, I think it would, yeah. Just into more intoxicated people in general, whether they're driving or whether they're fighting or whatever the case may be. I think 1:00 AM and a lot of towns is probably put in there for a reason. Just my opinion.
Yeah, nothing good happens after 12:00.
Did you say 10 o'clock?
Nothing good happens after 12:00. Uninvented time, yeah.
I, I'm good with New Year's Eve. That's fine. We, we'll, I'll just.
We'll call that, we'll put that in the memo as baby steps and we'll say New Year's Eve to start and see where it goes. Item number three, and this, this is a, you know, item number three, part number three, is the proration or full refund of closing businesses. During COVID, we refunded, we tried to refund too, but we can never get ahold of the ownership of one of them. Business that went out of business and we tried to, as part of the COVID relief that we were doing with liquor license waiving and fees, we tried to reimburse those who had already paid for the previous year but went out during COVID. The, it was brought to our attention, you know, we prorate businesses when they come into the community. And they, let's say they start six months into the year. You know, I don't have it directly in front of me. I'd have to look at the memo, but I believe we prorate it on a quarterly basis. So yeah, so if you, if you come in, for instance, our liquor year actually starts March 1st. If you were to come in at September 1st, you basically do pay only 50% of your liquor license because you're only getting 50% of the year. So we do it in 25% increments based on the time of the year. One of the thoughts was if a business is closing, would we prorate or refund the business's liquor license back to them even after COVID? Told the business owner that we would bring it to the board. Throw that out there.
So we, we did the rebate for COVID. That was my understanding. That once COVID's over, which is coming up, that we would go back to collecting those fees. That was my understanding.
That wasn't a question though. The question is if the guy would, or the restaurant decided to close halfway through the, their one-year payment, right? Is that what?
It'd be any liquor license.
Outside of COVID.
Outside of COVID, if anybody's leaving the village.
Right, somebody's like, hey, we're closing and they got a third left.
I, I don't see, we're losing the revenue on that, so that's.
We do that on the other side, right? When they come in, if it's only half a year, we only charge them half a year?
Correct. So you want to prorate it? Is that what you want to do? We're asking the board what, if that's something you would be willing to. Yeah, that's fine.
What's the cost of a license?
So a license is varied between roughly all of our licenses are 1,500. If, unless you have like a real small license, there are some that are less than a thousand, but they range between 1,500 and 3,000 for the year annually.
How many liquor licenses do we currently have?
I want to say we have around 25 to 30.
Wouldn't it be easier just to bill them quarterly?
No.
Or is that more?
Businesses like to come in and just get it done once a year.
I just thought since we prorate on the front end that it's, it doesn't really happen often, but somebody's looking maybe to do it now and it just.
Yeah, that's fine if you want to prorate it, if they want to leave and then.
Got a third left.
Yeah.
It's not that much.
In a typical year, how many businesses would close, not, non-COVID times? One or two? I mean, what would be your thoughts, Steve?
It looks like just, it looks like we have 31 liquor licenses that would apply to. And on a given year, how many close? Not many, because I mean, if you think about it, out of those 30, probably 15 to 20 are restaurants. And the rest of them are grocery stores, liquor stores. They have a golf course that has a liquor license, gas stations have liquor licenses. So you don't see a lot of gas stations or anything like that going out of business. So maybe a couple at the most. It's really, the, the restaurants are the ones that are more frequent.
So we're okay with that then?
Yes.
I, I would be fine with it, yeah.
I have another liquor question. Can I ask that?
Do that as a proration then? Is that what you said? Prorate it? Okay. You, you can ask it, but I got two more parts of this.
Oh, okay.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, you're, you're.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. All right, the next one is about citizenship requirement. So, and Kevin, you know, pick me up if I stumble here, but so a couple of years ago, we had, it was the first time in my tenure that we had a, a business approach to village looking for a liquor license. But they didn't actually have, the person that was applying for the liquor license was not a US citizen. So that is actually formerly a state law, okay? And so what, when we did some research, it appears that many towns actually still have that provision, most of which I would, I would assume are similar to our situation where it only was a recent change within the last couple of years in the state law. So some probably just haven't had the, the need to even review it yet. In our case, that business ended up getting someone who was a US citizen to apply for the license. We had it, something similar come up again recently with someone who was a US citizen. They wanted to add somebody to their ownership and we had to determine whether or not that affected their liquor license status because the second owner was a legal resident of the United States. Was a legal resident of the United States but not a citizen. Our code says the applicant has to be a citizen, so we, we still granted it. Because the original applicant is in fact a US citizen. At this point, Aurora has gotten rid of their restrictions. On citizenship requirements for businesses to have a liquor license. Batavia also got rid of theirs, but still has a caveat. Um, and Aurora might have this, we just didn't find it when we did our research, but Batavia has a, uh, specific section that says. You don't have to be a US citizen, but you still have to be a legal resident of the United States, uh, to ask for a license.
Yeah, it's probably a good way to.
So that was the question for the board.
Batavia version would follow the work, in my opinion. Have to be at least.
Smears the state, state went right, Steve.
Correct, so that, the state doesn't even address the resident alien, they just eliminated the citizenship requirement. I, I think we should have resident, uh, legal residency in the United States.
Yes.
Yeah, like Batavia.
Yes. Agreed.
Okay, now the last one, um, it's both the most complicated and the easiest one. It's complicated in the sense that, um, as I read to you a passage from our code, our code is, uh, and. This is not a knock on the attorney who may or may not have written it over the years, um, but at times, it. It's not that it's contradictory, but sometimes when you read it, it's, it's very legalese, it's not very easy to follow, especially if you're an applicant. Trying to understand what your requirements are. Um, Natalie did a really nice job of working with Kevin. And they tried to find parts of our code that were both redundant. And or written in basically like a double negative, and turn those sentences to the positive so that. It's easier to read the code, so it's the same rules per se.
I would like to speak both in defense and in critique of me that the attorney who wrote this may or may not have been me.
He shall rename, uh, nameless. But, um, yeah, so in, in there, there's. And I'm trying to find a good example, because there's a lot of paragraphs here, um, but there's a lot of nots and nos in the same sentences. And so it requires you to reread the sentence four times to figure out that the answer is yes. So Natalie thought it would be a good idea to clean it up, and there's nothing here that necessarily changes the code, it just rewords the exact same requirements.
Okay, yeah, it's nice.
I can understand it.
There's a lot.
You went through it, she spent some time.
And then that's all I had. Now, Mary, did you?
Yeah, I, the, uh, when Mayor Berman had the executive orders. From the COVID, are they all expired?
So we, sort of, but not really. So the, I know. When we looked into this a little bit, because we were wondering when phase five kicked in, if that automatically ended the executive orders. Where we're at right now, and I have, uh, brought it with me just in case, um, is that the governor actually did extend. An executive order, if I'm correct, until the end of June. And so the way our code is written is I believe it still mirrors. When an executive order is in effect, but that doesn't, uh, mean that the board can't change that ahead of time. Um, and rescind the executive orders we have. And so in giving that some thought, the, the executive orders we have. There's a few of them, but they are very specific to, uh, business assistance that was allowed by the state that we mirrored. So we go back to that, that's essentially things like curbside liquor sales, outdoor eating areas in adjacent parking lots. Where zoning, you know, kind of gets thrown out of the wayside and said, we don't care that you're taking up three or four spots, just put your tents out there as long as they're done safely. Um, so those are the things we mirrored to allow, and they still are in effect. When those executive orders of the governor expire, essentially so do those. And so, um, right now, that's where we're at, and I think the, you know, unless I hear differently, I think we're just planning to. Let them expire as they expire unless the board wants to step in and say, no.
My only thought was with the curbside liquor sales, I mean, I heard a lot of great compliments like from the turf room hardware, certain places where they have the specialty drinks. That might be worthwhile, like consider continuing, you know.
So, I believe the state took action to extend that, not, not as an executive order, but as. Opening it up as a matter of law.
Three years, was that three years?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't read it, so.
There was, um, there were certain things that were extended by law as opposed to executive order in order to try to prevent this confusion. The one where I think it most affects us is it is the outdoor eating areas, um, which.
There, there's a state component, and then there's a local component, so, you know, if we wanted to be, um, more generous than we have been in the past. And allow things to continue the way they are, we would want to take local action and amend our code to actually allow it. Either as a permanent matter or maybe as a, you know, for a year or two years or whatever. I, I, I think it's time that we get rid of the executive orders. I, I, I think it's been long enough. And I, I, I think that the, the, we're gonna be at a hundred percent capacity for all indoor restaurants. Uh, as of Friday, there's no reason to just give up our right to regulate different businesses. And outside, outside dining unless we do it by, like you said, a code change or something like that, so. I'm in favor of getting rid of the executive orders, and, and then if we want to dress it, um, more broadly. But, but here, I mean, i- it's kind of nice as a board to be able to pick and choose, because not everybody is suited. To have outs- outdoor dining. We did it because we wanted our businesses to stay in business. That risk is not there anymore.
Well, they're still using it, right? Still in effect.
It's still in effect right now.
I mean, I, I know that, that little Randall, Randall Cafe, I go, they, they still have their tent up.
And, and that's the thing, I mean, so going back to, uh, what Bill brought up and, and Kevin, when you talk about some of the liquor codes, there's. You can only do so much at some times, like we have authority, it's ironic in some senses, that in, when it comes to home rule. We can't supersede the state, but when it comes to liquor codes, we can actually be stronger than the state in some, some cases. So if the state actually says that it's okay to have curbside liquor like it does for this extended period, that's fine, as long as the, the board is, is. You know, wants to continue doing that. The long-term effect on that is when that state law sunsets, or they, unless they make it a permanent law. Then we would be revisiting that at that time. Now, as far as the other issue is, is we're bringing up is, it's really the zoning of it, right? So right now, there's kind of two provisions. You have to, to do outdoor dining in general, it's allowed by code in certain areas. And, and Mike would walk through a business who would be looking to have, let's say, an outdoor dining area. And on a case-by-case basis, Mike looks at the zone and makes sure it's allowed, where they have to set it up, or can they have it near the curb? We do that on a regular basis. The executive order put it, uh, just as a reminder, it was an extension of that, so. What it did was it gave businesses that had outdoor dining areas the ability to go into the parking lot. It also gave the ability for people who didn't have outdoor dining areas to establish an outdoor parking lot. Um, adjacent to their business, um, outdoor area. So it, so once again, it was an extension of existing outdoor areas. And then it was for those who didn't have it at all could now use adjacent parking spaces. But they still had to meet a minimum standard that the village set in the executive order. Mike gave a checklist, there's like ten items in there, and it says. You know, you have to have sufficient lighting, you have to have, uh, safety protection, signage, whatever, um, bouncers, things like that to try to keep it organized.
But could those people that otherwise wouldn't fit into our zoning code get it? E- even if they, you had that minimum standards, but did they track with the zoning?
So the zoning code, where, where the effect is, uh, essentially is that, and Mike, you jump into, um, is that. You're limited where you can put it by the code, and then in certain cases, we also have parking requirements and zoning, so. The issue really becomes in some areas where there's tight parking lots, every space is, has to be accounted for. If you need thirty-five spaces and you only have thirty-five spaces to meet our code, then you take three of them away, you're technically negative three spaces. So you would have to get a zoning variance to allow you to build into the parking lot at that point.
But right now, they could be.
Right now, we kind of just like to state aloud, we threw local zoning out.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So they didn't have to meet.
Correct, they just have to meet the safety requirements.
You know, I'm kind of, um, I'm, uh, first of all, I'd like to ask everybody to kind of speak into their microphones with these barriers up. And they have terrible acoustics in this room, I'm having a little difficulty hearing things. Um, but I, I, I'm kind of inclined to. Because I know that, uh, from personal experience, there's a lot of people who would rather dine outside, and so that, uh, to get rid of the, all the. Or, um, the orders would then give a disadvantage to those, uh, institutions that don't have space outside. So I'm thinking, maybe we could think about this, go through the summer with at least that part. Now, the curbside liquor serving. I don't have any problem with, uh, letting that expire, but I'm thinking maybe the outside dining might be. Um, I'll, let us go ahead and through the warm, uh, weather, let these agents or these organizations and restaurants and so forth. Catch up in their financial situation, and then maybe take a look at getting rid of that part of it. That's kind of how I, uh, look at it.
Yeah, I think we should leave it and see how it goes. I, I, I don't think everyone's, um, the businesses, I think it might affect them if we lift it. And the state's allowing it, so I don't see why we have to, like, remove it.
Well, and, and I have to ask, so there's two issues. So the first issue is if our executive orders, let's say, do expire. And we go into the curbside liquor, if the board is okay with that, just because the state allows it. I don't know if we would have to take action locally, because you do have to have a local and state liquor license to operate, so. Just because the state allows it doesn't mean it automatically comes to us as well. That was actually the purpose of those executive orders was to say locally. Our code will match that.
Right.
So outside of the executive orders, if the board wanted curbside to continue after whatever point, the board doesn't want the executive orders anymore. I, we'd have to take some action, maybe resolution.
We would, because our, our code currently does not allow it, so we'd have to amend it so that it's allowed. And, and with zoning, um, with the exec, our executor orders evaporating with the states. If we wanted to allow the more generous, um, dining that exceeds our current zoning code, we'd have to make a change to our zoning code to allow it.
And the, and it's good that this got brought up tonight, because what really needs to happen is we need to formulate a timeline for how that's even possible. Because if it's a zoning change, unless there's a provision that allows us to do temporary zoning quickly, zoning changes take time. And so we have to have public hearing notices and whatnot for zoning code amendments.
Some, I don't think we should be messing with the zoning code for something that's a temporary situation that's ninety-nine percent done. With already at this point. I mean, I, I like the outdoor dining, and some restaurants have it, some restaurants aren't going to be able to have it if. We get rid of it, but we also have to keep in mind that these outdoor dinings that are just kind of makeshift, they're taking away parking from communal parking lots. So to say they can keep doing this until September, August, you know, I, I just don't think that's fair to the other, other tenants in the building that now. May or may not have, you know, a lack of parking because of it. I mean, I think we should get rid of the executive orders. I think we should. I'm all for expanding and allowing curbside liquor. I think that's a great thing to have, but I think we should follow the science. We should follow the state, everything's open, everything's back to normal. Why are we going to give certain businesses, certain privileges that other ones aren't going to have? And why are we going to mess with our zoning code when this isn't going to be an issue in six months? And like you said, it's going to take six months to probably.
It wouldn't take that long, like six months, but because zoning codes do go to the planning commission, so it does take time to go to the commission and bring it back to committee. And village board. What I would actually ask Mike, uh, very quickly, is just kind of to, if you wouldn't mind. When it comes to restaurants in town, what are the barriers per se, other than, uh, you know, for them to be able to have outdoor dining areas?
Yeah, I mean, this came up, so this was actually done when I restarted in two thousand and thirteen. Uh, the issue was, was, wasn't really an issue. Do, we just wanted to open up even back then. So if you're an existing restaurant, we felt that you should have the ability to have an outdoor, you know, eating area. Beer garden, as long as you met certain criteria, you know, and they're, they're, they're very, you know, very general and broad, but you, they have to be accessory to principal use. Mean that if you're, you have to be an established restaurant, um, that is your primary use, and you can have as an accessory an outdoor dining area. Um, and also too, it has to be limited to a designated area, contiguous to the building. Um, it cannot be located on any public road sidewalk or bike path. Um, there wasn't, there is no, there's no requirement. Per se directly in this regarding parking and taking up the number of parking spaces, but from a normal zoning standpoint, you have to provide the amount of parking space anyway. So if a business is currently at its capacity with parking, and they want to expand the business, which return is going to require more parking. They can't go into a parking area, thus taking up more parking, so it's a double negative at that point. Um, it can't obstruct any, any vehicle or pedestrian traffic, um, no amplified noise, um. Carried out in good health, safety, and anything that's within five hundred feet of a lawn and residential property shall have buffering to reduce noise. So again, they're very generic, but we wrote this in two thousand and thirteen to allow businesses, even at that time, the luxury of having some sort of outdoor dining facility.
Well, and here, the, the, the businesses that do have permanent outdoor dining have spent a, a great deal of money. And have come in here and gotten their variances if they needed it, or, or their building permits, and, and I, I think we should encourage. That type of behavior and not just throw out the zoning code, because we think that, you know. Tents in the parking lot's a good idea. I, I mean, I think we should, and, and how many businesses are really doing that with the temporary? It, it, because there's, I, I can think of at least five or six that have permanent outdoor facilities. One just came in here a couple of months ago. And applied for it.
Off the top of my head, I'm gonna say, and, uh, I'm gonna say probably three to five are taking advantage of outside dining. Uh, in addition, like that we're actually doing it, uh, in addition to what they normally would do.
Did you say five?
Three to five. I don't, I don't think there's that many. Uh, Randall Cafe was a good example, because that is one of them that is taking advantage of that.
So they had nothing before, or were they just underneath that?
No, I don't think they had anything. I think they just.
They were just like a restaurant and they put the tent up, they're just, yeah.
I, I agree with Mark. I mean, that's, that's a great point, because they're, now we're going to have unfair competition. You've got people that have a makeshift patio, tent, whatever, competing with people that went through the process, paid money and invested in their business. So I, I think we need to start getting the village back to normal and, you know, let everybody play by the same rules.
Quite frankly, after, you know, I'm, I'm calculating in my head right now what I know, and I don't think outside of Randall Cafe. And Brother Chimp had outdoor makeshift tent, but they did get approved for an actual outdoor area through the, the zoning process recently. Right, so in theory, yeah, so they'll, they'll actually have a legitimate outdoor space through the zoning code. I'm not sure there's more than one or two.
I think Oak Street had one, I think turf room hardware have provided some accommodations.
Yeah, I think a lot of it was just additional to existing, um, hardware, turf room, Oak Street, like Mike said, they had additional. Outdoor eating, but they have permanent outdoor eating establishments. Uh, was Taco Madre possibly?
They already had, uh, outdoor dining.
Outdoor, so the issue really might be germane to only one or two businesses.
Well, and the whole purpose was because they were at, what, thirty percent capacity inside, they needed additional CD that doesn't exist anymore.
I kind of agree with Mike, just, you're talking about a very, very small amount of businesses, and it's an unusual time in COVID. And if, what would be the real harm if you extended it through August or September, just to give those businesses that didn't have the outdoor space? Even last summer, maybe, uh, to just get a little chance to catch up and get a little bit more business, not extend it forever. Um, it doesn't seem like you're talking about one or two businesses that it's that impactful on the village as a whole.
I think the issue would be is if the executive orders expire, we don't necessarily have the authority to just grant them. The ability to sit in the parking lot without zoning.
Well, that, I think that was my point earlier, uh, is it not, aren't we just talking about extending the executive order? Or are you talking about a permanent ordinance change? Because I'm not in favor of that at all. I kind of agree with Mark Carroll, that businesses that want outside dining. Submit the permit and do the.
Right, I agree with that also.
Requirements to do that, but just during this time.
I, I think when we go to, um, to phase five, we're out of the emergency, and so we don't have the authority to extend. The emergency order, so we would have to make a change to our code.
Okay.
Okay, I thought we were talking about, um, discontinuing the executive orders prior to the time that the state executive order expired.
Think so, but you know, we could do a non-permanent change, you know, it could be a change with a sunset. So you could still effectively extend, you know, by a, an ordinance change that has a sunset to it. That's not an executive order, it just has a sunset. If we wanted to.
Last thing for the curbside as well, even though the state's.
Last thing for curbside as well, even though the state's allowing it.
I think the state's change was permanent on curbside. Or no, it wasn't. It was uh temporary for three years.
Regardless of whether it was permitted or three years, and it sounded like it was three years, but regardless, it would still require a change on our part to match that. So 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 in summation here, if June eleventh is phase five, and if our attorney is saying that that is essentially the end of the emergency, and these executive orders are going to essentially expire on their own, that leaves us a gap of the outdoor dining and the curbside. Now, what we can do is I can take an ordinance directly to the board on the twenty-first of uh June, and that we could match the curbside to the state. We can match it to the terms of the state law, whether it's permitted or temporary. We could just match it, and we could always go back and change if we need to. But that thing, at least there, we could take care of that right away. As far as the zoning, I think what Kevin was saying is you can technically do the same thing, call it a non-permanent change, which would be an ordinance that lets us supersede our own code for an extended period of time, depending on what the board's action is, as long as it has a sunset. I don't know if that's what you want to do with the outdoor dining, but it sounds like come back with an ordinance on the twenty-first for curbside to match the state law is on everybody's mind.
Steve, can you articulate what the curbside law is?
Yeah, so basically, you can't sell liquor right now. Um, packaged liquor sales and actual restaurants have the ability, if someone wants to literally pull up to the curb, someone from the store can, as long as they ID check them, can give them liquor. Some of the other codes that were changed by the state um were cocktails uh to be allowed to be um transported in vehicles. And I'd have to look at this after this meeting to see if that was part of the extended uh curbside liquor distribution that the state's allowing.
Yeah, it's a little more limited, actually, than I was thinking. Um, so we would just have to summarize what it is if the board would like to match it.
Is there is there a restriction on how many drinks somebody can pull up and order and drive away in their car with them?
No, because honestly, it would be the same thing of, I I some towns have drive-through liquor stores, and it would be the same thing.
Not necessarily open, though, it's just drinkable like a soda.
Oh, no, no, it just wouldn't be. By by law, they have to be in sealed containers. And, oh, yeah, and.
That's what I was wondering, what is what is it all?
Correct. And if it's packaged liquor, it would be the essentially, you know, calling the liquor store and saying, I want a bottle, this bottle, this, and they bring it to your car.
Like the Turf Room, I I've I've seen them go out there. They have had like a can of pop, it's like a Pepsi can, they seal it up, buy your dinner and take two drinks home.
Clearly, I've not ordered any over the last year, so I'm not familiar. Um, so I was just wondering, like, I had this idea that you just go there, they mix it and put a little cap on it, like.
It's a nice decision for the signature drinks or things that I don't think somebody go to a restaurant and get a Miller Lite to take home, but but they might take whatever.
Harterator.
So I think the the easiest thing to do is what Kevin just said. Without looking at that code, I'm not sure what the state laws change exactly are, what they regarding curbside or cocktails. But because we can't be looser than the state, but we can be stricter, in this case, it sounds like the looser version would be to actually match the state, because that's actually looser than our codes. So in that regard, what Kevin was saying is just mirror whatever the state says, bring that back to the next meeting, and that would be our new liquor code going forward for X amount of time.
Yeah, I I I would like that. As Chief Fisher, do you have any comment about the curbside uh sales? Have we had any issues over the last year, like increased DUIs or anything like that because of it?
No, uh, that would be very difficult to say if it's because of that, but I don't think so. I I really don't see the difference between me pulling up and and somebody bringing my drink out versus me going in and buying a buying the drink or a six-pack or whatever the case may be. I I personally don't have a problem with the the way it's written now.
In the way the state law is written, um, at the time when the executive orders were first created by the state, it also included delivery. So that was another thing, too. Liquor stores could deliver, and you could order a pizza and a bottle of wine, as long as the restaurant had available liquor license to, you know, to for consumption on premises and whatnot.
Is that still active, that part of?
That's what I'm I'm saying. I don't know if that part of it is still there, but whatever that is, it's either going to expire technically on June eleventh, or we bring it back on the twenty-first and and kind of immortalize it to the state.
Why don't we just take a quick yes or no? Should we just mirror the state? That's what I think we should do. Let's give our restaurants as much leeway as we can.
Mark, what do you think?
Yes.
As far as liquor sales?
Yeah, the curbside.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I didn't hear what Lawrence said.
I think we should just mirror whatever the state does.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. That's that's reasonable.
Now, back to the zoning, the last thing was outdoor dining. So as we established, we think it's it was three to five, it might be one to three now, number of establishments that actually don't have permitted outdoor uh dining areas. Um, Kevin, can you uh once again, just to make sure I heard you right, you said that we technically can do a temporary variation from our code um for something like that, but it has to be done by ordinance?
Yeah, and it it would, it could just be that um uh a change to the ordinance that sunsets on a particular date back to what it is today, if we wanted it to be temporary. But it would have to be by ordinance.
Is that something we want to bring back on the twenty-first as well, or are we willing to just say when the orders are done, outdoor extra dining?
Done the villages or?
No, the the state, when the when a state no longer allows for outdoor dining, an extension of your existing dining or or no dining?
Ours are going to expire too.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Here the state.
Follow the state, yeah.
I would follow the state. It was everything, absolutely.
Yeah, and I would say no zoning change, no sunset.
Okay, so it sounds like we're really at that point. It's just the one ordinance now to mirror the state about whatever curbside they have in delivery.
All right, anything else on that? Item four, beautification, maybe, Steve?
All right. I felt like that one was, it was like in a one question, twenty-seven parts. Okay. The next one is the beautification code. Uh, so we have two standing committees in our our village code. It's the beautification committee and the North Aurora Days Committee. These are committees that are basically established by the board. Uh, we appoint, uh, when I say we, the mayor appoints and the village board with advising consent approves uh appointees. Like we do with North Aurora Days a few years ago, this beautification committee is currently not operating the way the code states that it should be. And it really needs to have uh more members and some updating, um, because quite frankly, village operations have become different than they were years ago when this was established. And and that simply can be summed up as the staff has taken on bigger roles in the last few years. Um, Bill is is definitely highly active in the finance end of expenditures from the committees coming through the village's purchasing processes. Um, I attend a lot of these meetings, if not all of them, to kind of make sure the logistics are there, public works and police are involved, uh, depending on the issues on a regular basis now, and we attend these meetings. And by code, technically, we are supposed to facilitate um those groups' actions going forward. So like the North Aurora Days Committee, we are uh looking to, uh, the mayor is getting ready to appoint people, because right now we have three people on the committee. You're supposed to have, I want to say it's between six to eight people total on that committee, so we're short. Uh, before we do that, it doesn't make sense to appoint somebody to a committee until you know exactly what the committee is is doing and make sure that that's still viable to the village board. Um, so in that regard, right now, the beautification committee is basically, they do a lot of the flower plantings on the what I call the State Street corridor. Uh, so there we have three dedicated volunteers who are on this committee who, for literally decades, have come out and and planted. But we've grown over the years, and so one of the things we've talked to them about is the staff taking a bigger role and having public works actually do some of the plantings and in getting them to do the things that I think they were originally supposed to do, which is come up with beautification projects for the com- the community um as a whole, so to speak. And then a approach, go through the staff, through the budget process, figure out the logistics and present them to the village board like we do. We have a beautification line item, but essentially I've just with Bill, we just increased it over years for projects that we think, you know, are necessary to do. Now we want to have that committee actually present some ideas. So when we come to the board, we say, here's the beautification line item, but in that line item, it includes these following things next year. And so part of that was eliminating some of the the longstanding things of having chairmans and co-chairmans and secretaries and treasurers. I mean, you don't need to have a lot of those positions, because the staff is actually in the room doing the ministerial work uh of the committee. Um, at one point, the committee was established, and one of the the three provisions was to encourage and enlist residents and businesses to volunteer funding and services for the beautification of the village. We have never, in my tenure, solicited money from the public for flowers or anything like that, nor do I think that that was something that we would ever do. So I brought that uh as a possible revision to take that out. Maybe at some point, um, the village financially is stable. I don't think that's something we are looking to ask businesses and residents to to pay extra money for flowers. Um, eliminating uh the need for, oh, okay, eliminating the need for a trustee liaison or village president to approve all expenditures. It used to go through a trustee liaison. There still would be a trustee liaison to the group. Um, but since myself is at those meetings, I I have the purchasing policy. I know what's allowed and how we bid things and what the dollar amounts are and whatnot. So there's no need to have to run that through somebody. If the staff is attending the meetings, we we can tell them exactly what the the village's policies are. Um, aligning committees, financial presentation to the village board with the annual budget process. Uh, so instead of having them do a separate presentation, we would actually just bring it during the budget and show you next year's budget and what we're presenting. Um, and then this is the catch-all, ensuring expenditures, agreements and contracts are made in accordance with the village's purchasing policy, while leaving flexibility for the committee to make necessary purchases throughout the year. What that means is we have a purchasing policy that uh Bill and I have revised over the years. It sets the parameters, the board by board establishment of what I have authority to purchase, what the board needs to authorize. What you find with committees is, let's say they come up with three projects and it's five thousand dollars each. So you say on a line item, it's like, well, they only need fifteen thousand dollars. But the truth is, things pop up during the year and like, hey, you know what? This would be nice, and this is eight hundred dollars. Can we afford to do that? So the thought process is being is not making a comeback every single time they have an additional expenditure. We have a line item, just like we do every other village line item in the operating budget. And we just check that line item to make sure that they're spending, you know, appropriately. And then if it's an issue, if it's ever a huge project or it exceeds my authority, I would just take it to the village board then. So that's it. That's a long-winded way of saying we want to update the code so that uh the mayor can appoint some people.
I'm for that. That sounds good.
Good. All right, to me. Okay, last item, trustee committees.
Okay, so the last item is about the operations and services committee, and I'm just going to briefly go into um the history of it. When I started here, there were four committees. Uh, we had community development, finance, public works and public safety. The idea was uh that the the mayor wanted to have three trustees on each committee, so everyone on the board was assigned to two committees. Um, and then the idea was is that those uh those individual smaller subcommittees would hear items, and then it would eventually go to the village board for discussion. I and I think the purpose was to give the trustees uh a more active saying things before they went to final vote. We ended up reviewing that a few years back and realized that we were canceling a lot of meetings, because and 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 this is, I think the philosophy, at least at the staff level, has always been that the the overwhelming majority of items in our professional opinion should be full board discussions. So we ended up bringing those discussions to the committee as a whole anyways. So the committees ended up creating an extra step, basically, where you would go to a subcommittee, then have to take that same topic that three of you have already seen to show it to the other three, to then take it to the village board for approval. And what that did was it actually slows the process down for when like a business or something wants to do something quickly. And we're like, well, technically, so we stopped doing it. We just go straight to committee of the whole. And once again, on bigger topics, we always wanted the full board feedback anyways. So then we we took those four committees and we we narrowed them down to two, thinking that that would maybe get more involvement. And truth is, i- it really, it it didn't. It it ended up with the same number of items being given to those subcommittees, and most of the time, uh, we prefer to bring it to committee of the whole. When now now we're up to speed here. So when Mayor Gaffino came on, we started talking about that. One of his things was uh the idea of bringing more collaborative discussions to the board at committee of the whole. So that's when I started saying, okay, well, we should really check into the subcommittees. We're only meeting like two or three times a committee a year. At at what point do we just say, if the board doesn't really think those are viable, the key, then we dissolve them, and of the staff essentially just takes everything to committee of the whole for conversation, for the whole board to discuss.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read the rationale, and I agree completely. I it it when especially when you look at the number of meetings that we have not had, uh, because there's been no agenda, excuse me. So I'm in favor of uh getting rid of the committees.
And I and I'll be honest with you, it's it was tough, because I understand um and with the previous mayor, I understand what he was trying to do, and I understand what the the importance of trying to get more involvement. In the bigger towns that have, you know, fourteen or twenty members, it is, subcommittees are very effective. I think here you have a staff that have come from other villages, and we are, not that other villages don't have subcommittees, but we have just been ingrained in our professional history of bringing things to the whole board for discussion, since there's only seven of you, and you're all going to vote on it eventually.
I think the philosophy was back in oh eight that a lot of us weren't, weren't involved at all. The way staff and everybody operated was different. So the mayor appointed a trustee in each group to get uh a feel for what's going on. That's kind of how it all played out. Basically, we all had uh some director or department head that we worked with and and I got more involved versus outside looking in. But as things progressed and the staff has changed, and you know, there's a lot of feedback back and cooperation every day, back and forth with everybody, so. Plus that hour, we can hopefully use another meeting at six o'clock, and sometimes it lasts ten minutes, and then yeah, we're stuck here for forty-five minutes, so.
Oh, John came up with a great idea this morning and told me that if we dissolve these committees, the beautification committee, which has not even had regular meetings, because they don't have a quorum, they just simply call the village. One person will say, hey, can we order flowers? John goes, well, you know, if I'm attending these beautification committee meetings, you can make them at six o'clock on a board meeting night, and now I can just still be here for that.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. Guess that's it. Motion adjourned, and then we're going to next session for collective bargaining.
Correct.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same thing. All right, thank you. Uh, we will be adjourned, and we'll be coming back.